I hereby reconvene the January 14, 2014 meeting of the Marion County School Board at 6:00 P.M. Good evening. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your cellphone or put them on vibrate. I'm also asking my colleagues, when they speak tonight, lean up and speak into the mic. We have a request from the, from our audience out there. Ms. Needham, Coordinator of Library, Media, Media Service, and Art, please introduce the individual who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening. Ms. Needham.
Good evening to all of you. I'm here tonight to introduce and honor some people who have helped us for two years now, probably more than that, but what I've been involved with, with our art programs have helped us with funding. And to help me to honor them, we have some students that are going to lead us in the pledge and our inspiration for tonight. So I want to bring up Anna-Lisa Ramputi and Lexus Fairchild from Maplewood Elementary. They will lead us in the pledge and our inspiration.
My name is Anna-Lisa.
And I am Lexus.
We are fifth grade students from Maplewood Elementary. Please stand for the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
On behalf of the students of Marion County's elementary schools, we would like to thank Mr. George Albright Tax Collector, Ms. Deborah Dobbin, Assistant Tax Collector, Mr. Steve Hall from Tax Collector's Office, Mr. Corey Poole from Jenkins Auto Group, and FAFO.
Because of the TAG Art Program, art programs in Marion County received much-needed money to fund their art programs. We thank you for your generosity and support of the arts.
These two students are fifth grade students at Maplewood, and the TAG Art Program is a fifth grade program in our elementary schools. Last year was our first year to participate, and that program brought in over $13,000 to our art programs, our elementary art programs. This year, we're excited to say that it brought in over $15,000 to our elementary art programs. It's a fabulous program. The kids enjoy it. The community enjoys it because what basically the kids are doing, the fifth grade students, they're designing tags, vanity plates, like you see, you know, everywhere on the front of cars. They're not actually car, auto tags. Mr. Albright won't let us do that, but they're vanity plates, and they design them, and they actually get them printed. And their parents can buy them, friends and family can buy them. They're available to them, and for all the ones that are purchased, the school benefits from that. We also have, as a very important part of this program, a sponsor, and that is Jenkins Auto Group, Mr. Corey Poole, who sponsors this every year and donates to this program $10,000. At the end of the program, our schools split this money, the sponsorship money, and of course, if they earned any with their sales of the, of the car tags, they automatically get that as well. But it's an absolutely phenomenal program. It's done a lot to help our art programs in our elementary schools, and we thank Mr. Albright, Deb Dobson, and Steve Hall from his office. They do a tremendous job, a lot of work on this program. A lot of, lot of time and effort on their part goes into it, and we really do appreciate it.
Ms. Needham, we will be bringing you back in a few minutes, and we'll be bringing all of, all of these contentions, like George.
Am I going too, too long?
That's okay.
We've got you scheduled for this portion of it. You're fine.
Oh.
But you'll be okay.
I'm sorry.
But we'll bring you right back.
Okay.
Okay. I just want to thank Ms. Needham and the young ladies that led us in our inspiration and pledge today. We will be coming right back to Ms. Needham in a few minutes. Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the agenda for the January 14, 2014 School Board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Second.
It was so moved by Mr. Crawford, second by Mrs. Ely. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero.
Did you do this manually? Yes, I just did the care.
Do it manually. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 21, 2013 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, the November 26, 2013 School Board meeting, December 10, 2013 School Board meeting, December 12, 2013 Administrative Briefing and Works Session. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Warrington, second by Mrs. Ely. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, I call a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. The motion passed, five zero. Ms. Judy Sinetti, Public Education Foundation Officer, is here to recognize a new business partner for College Park Elementary School. Ms. Sinetti.
Thank you, Mr. James. Good evening, board members. Superintendent Tomlin, always good to be back with you. I would like to call up here with me Ms. Pat Stout, Principal of College Park Elementary, Ms. Debbie Boe, Dean of the College of Education from the College of Central Florida, and Dr. Jim Hennington, President of the College of Central Florida. And we are excited tonight to be able to officially recognize the business partnership between the College of Central Florida and College Park Elementary School. When I sent out email reminders this afternoon, Dr. Hennington emailed back and said he was excited to be able to recognize his favorite elementary school, College Park. So, I do have certificates that I would like to give, so that we can have one hanging both at the college and at College Park Elementary. So, Mrs. Stout, Dr. Hennington. And this is a partnership that is not just a partnership in name. The college is very involved at College Park Elementary School, and so I would like to give a few minutes to Principal Stout and to the College of Central Florida to tell you about some of the great things they do for their students and staff at College Park Elementary.
Thank you so much. It is a pleasure to finally become official with the college. We've enjoyed a relationship with them for a number of years. They've been very generous with their time, their staff, their talents. They've provided facilities, field trips over there, a lot of cultural activities, and it also gives our students an opportunity to go to a college and see what higher learning is all about. So, we're very excited and we're very happy to become the official child, I guess we could say, of the college, and so we're just delighted. Thank you.
Ms. Boe, Dr. Hennington?
Great. Well, thank you so much. I feel like we're in the phone book now. I'm in the phone book now. I'm excited about that. It's great to be official. It's great to have the relationship that we do with our family. We consider the school board our family, being in public education, and having our adopted elementary school right next door to us, the effort, the excitement that we have from our employees working with the kids, it really does make a difference, and it's something that helps us, because we get excited, as you do, when folks are getting a great education. So, we're thankful for the partnership. We continue to try and figure out how we can even do more, and maybe do more partnerships with more schools as we continue to grow. I also want to recognize, it doesn't happen without great people. And Debbie Boe here is our dean over our education area, and she, her drive is always to, how can we be more servant to our community and help out, and her and her team have been fantastic, and I really want to give her kudos. And a little plug, probably shouldn't be doing this, but anyhow, her daughter, if you don't know Brittany Boe, is going to be representing our country at the Olympics in Sochi.
Yes.
Very excited.
Absolutely.
She, it's an amazing story. She's only been in the ice. She's a speed skater, and it's very stiff competition with the Dutch and the Germans, but she is, Brittany right now is the world record holder at the 1,000 meters in the entire world. So, very excited about that, and we're all pulling for Brittany to bring back a medal for us, so very excited about that.
She will make a visit to College Park.
I was gonna say.
With a good math lesson, yes.
But Debbie, anything you want to add?
I just want to say thank you for allowing us to come to you. I know you've mentioned that you come to us at the College of Central Florida, but we have, from administration to faculty to staff, every single person on our campus knows when there is an opportunity or an idea, when we think of elementary schools, we don't think beyond a block away from us. So, it may be our career employees that are doing a food drive for Christmas time. It may be our criminal justice program folks that are doing the backpack efforts. We may be taking student groups over to College Park Elementary to do the accelerated reading pep rallies. I was thrilled, as Dr. Hennington was, on Saturday evening. We invited College Park Elementary to come over to our men's basketball game, and we had about 25 families, so we had them come down at halftime, and they had their pictures taken with the Patriots and the dancers. And just Monday morning, I called our athletic director and said, "That was so awesome. Do we just have to have one day?" And he said, "No, Debbie, you can invite them to every single game as our guests." So, that's a new invitation. I think it went over your way today. So, thank you to the board for allowing us to have this partnership, and thank you to you and your wonderful team.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks very much. Thank you.
And I would like to publicly welcome you to our community. I know you've been here a while, but we've followed your, well, I have followed your career when you were down in Seminole County, I believe, down in that area, and I know of some of the great things that you did at that college, and some of the things that we hope you, some of the programs that you had there, we're hoping that we, as a school board, can work with you to make these things happen. I hope you and the superintendent have talked about some of the neat things.
We meet regularly.
Some of the neat things that you were doing before you came here. So, again, I would like to, on behalf of the school board, thank you for being here, and it was excellent selection. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. Pleased to be here and to be served. Thank you very much.
Superintendent Tomlin, would you please introduce the representatives from Purvis Gray and Company, who are here to provide us, provide an overview of the 2012-2013 Fiscal Year and Financial Statement Audit?
Mr. Chairman and board members, you know that I just happen to have a very high opinion of our finance department, and especially the leadership there with Teresa Boss and Ellis. Each year, we have the opportunity to validate my opinion, and every three years, the Auditor General's Office comes in and does an official accounting of our services here, and then during the other two years, we have a private audit. And this year, as you already know, Purvis Gray has done our audit for us. They're here to do a presentation. I would like to ask Mark White, Allison Stone, and Tim Westgate to come up, and as they're making their way to the front of the room, I cannot speak for Mr. White, but certainly for Allison and Tim, who are both graduates of Vanguard High School, and they moved on to wonderful careers. I'll also call your attention to a booklet that was in your box. I believe you all have it right now, the Audit Report. We'd like to thank Purvis Gray for being here tonight to give us this report. Mr. White.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tomlin. We appreciate it. My name is Mark White, Tim, and Allison. We are here to essentially conclude the audit process by reviewing our final reports with the board. We had a formal exit conference previously with Mr. Tomlin and Mr. James, Chairman James, and have reviewed some of this with them, so we will finish it off by presenting it to the full board. Every year, you guys get the annual financial report from your finance and accounting department, so I know you've seen that. Of course, we're talking about the financial information for the fiscal year ended at June 30, 2013, so about six months ago. So, essentially, the information contained in the CAFR is that's very much that same information. So, we're not going to go through all the numbers. There's a few items that we do want to discuss with you in particular, and flip a few pages, but by and large, we had no audit adjustments that materially affected your annual financial report to make it any different than this, so that's a good thing. If I could get your, get you to turn, just prior to page one, page one is our auditor's report, but if you go to Roman numeral 13, which is prior to that, I'll give you guys a minute to get to that. This is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. I wanted to point out that the district submits this report every year to the GFOA, and the purpose of that is to, essentially for this report to be graded by the GFOA to make sure that it meets all the standards to receive their award for the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. And this is not only what you're required by law to do, the Florida statutes require you just to have a financial audit. To meet the standards of this award, you have to go over and above. There's additional disclosures, presentations, statistical data, a variety of other items, and you guys have been getting that award for several years. It's given a year in advance. You'll notice this is the June 12 award, so this book has been sent to them, and I expect you'll be receiving the 13 very shortly. So, what that really means is that this document meets the highest standards for financial reporting in the country. There is, there is no, no higher level than that. So, it gives you assurance, in addition to our audit reports, that the information, the financial data contained in this report is, is accurate and reliable. If you look on page one, we have our independent auditor's report. Again, this is a financial audit. This report essentially focuses on the financial statements that are accompanying this document, and it tells you that we have audited the financial statements as of and for the year ended June 13, and it reminds the reader that management, your management is responsible for the fair presentation of your financial statements, not the auditors. The auditors, our role is to express an opinion on that financial information based upon our audit. And if you look on page two, up towards the top, you will see our opinion up there, and that opinion basically tells you that we believe that these financial statements are free of material misstatement and fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So, that's what you are looking for in this type of report. There's additional paragraphs that go on to extend our opinion to some of the other information contained therein. And on page three, the last paragraph there, because you are a Florida local government, your audit is required to be conducted under the government auditing standards, which require that we issue an additional report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance with laws and regulations that might affect the financial statements. And that, this is just referencing that, and I'm pleased to tell you that we have no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control over financial reporting. So, that's a, that's a good thing for the district to have. We do have a couple of management letter comment recommendations that we will review with you, but those are not considered to be significant deficiencies in internal control. So, I'm gonna deviate just a little bit from, my promise not to go too far into the numbers with you, but to, if you could kind of flip back and forth with me, if you would. Our management letter comments start on page 116. They're way in the back. And we have two items for you. I'll let you all get to those. And they are followed on page 118 with your management's response. And on page 116, under the current year comments, implementation of new financial services software. As most of you know, during 2013, the district implemented the Skyward financial, all the financial applications, complete general ledger, payroll, the whole, the whole bit. As you might expect, that's a pretty big undertaking. When you completely change out all of your financial accounting and reporting software, that's a big deal. It was done very well. It's in the rearview mirror right now. There's a few i's to dot and t's to cross in the wrap-up process, which we have identified with the bullets included on page 116, but essentially, it's a big success story for y'all to have done that in one year. It's kind of amazing. As auditors, whenever we go into a client that we know during that year, they completely changed out their entire accounting system, we generally aren't real excited about going in to see all that. Y'all did a wonderful job with it, but we did want to point out some of the things that, that remain to be completed on it. And then on page 117 is our other comment, talking about, it's titled Fund Balance Adequacy, and this is where I wanted to kind of have you flip back and forth with me, if you would. If you could maybe go to page 15, and keep a, keep a finger on 117 there, because we'll maybe go back 15 and also 18, which is just a couple pages behind it. On page 15, we have the balance sheets for all your governmental funds. I'd like to draw your attention to the general fund, which is the first column on the left. Now, the balance sheet is all your assets and your liabilities and your fund balance of the general fund. And you will see the second line from the bottom, total fund balances, $16,511. And if you move up one line from that, you'll see that the unassigned portion of that is $11,241. Okay? And if you look just briefly over on page 118, page 118 is the income statement for the general fund also, that presents the revenues and the expenditures, same column, first one on the left. And looking down at the bottom, you'll see that your net change in fund balance is a negative $2,82,000. When subtracted from your beginning of the year, fund balances of $18 million, left you that $16,500 that we just saw on the balance sheet. So, I wanted to introduce our, our comment and recommendation by actually looking at those numbers with you. So, if you would go back to page 117, our comment just points out that fund balances is essentially the difference between your total assets and your total liabilities in the governmental fund, which represent the working capital reserves of the fund to bridge cash flow needs. Because, you know, we just had the tax collector here, Mr. Albright, they don't start sending you ad valorem proceeds until well into November, which is four or five months before school starts. So, from a cash flow point of view, you don't get a material portion of your revenues until much later in the year. Additionally, the fund balance provides for unforeseen emergencies, et cetera. And I believe you guys all in your, in the CAFR, I believe, staff included a copy of Florida Statute 1011.051 that basically contains language that requires the superintendent of the district to notify you, the school board, and the commissioner of education if at any time the assigned and unassigned fund balance is expected to fall below 3% of projected general fund revenue. So, by law, you are required to keep a minimum working capital reserve or fund balance equal to 3% of your projected revenues. When we do that calculation for you guys here, looking at that, that number on page 15 of $11,241, and at the time this report was done, your, your 14 budget was about $290 million. I understand it's maybe a little higher than that, maybe closer to 300. But when you do that, you guys are at about 3.8, somewhere in that range. So, what we see happening is since 2009, when the district had a total fund balance, not just the unassigned, but a total fund balance of approximately $32 million, we're now down, five, six years later, down to $16 and a half. Now, it's only the assigned and unassigned portion that's subject to this state statute, but what we're, what we're pointing out here is you're within 1% of reaching that 3%, minimum 3%. And if it goes down to 2%, it's, it's all the very same things we just read in that statute, plus the department, you have to submit an action plan to the Department of Education, and if they don't like it, they come down and start telling you how to run your school board. So, basically, this is just a caution to let you know that you're, you're getting close to that bottom threshold, and for that to be watched in this 2014 year that we're in right now, so that we don't cross below that. Ideally, we'd like to see you add to your fund balance over time, but we know that's difficult with all the budget cuts and the, you know, the recession that we've just come through. I know you guys need every dollar of the current year revenues for, for needs, so it's very difficult to actually add to it, but we think at a minimum, you need to make sure that your expenditures don't exceed your current revenues, and if at all possible, start the process of filling the bucket back up, adding a little bit to the fund balance over time. So, that's essentially the message that we bring to y'all tonight, and kind of the highlights of our report. We'd be glad to entertain any questions.
I can't wait to read it from cover to cover. It's very, very comprehensive, and I'm very impressed with all the detail and work that you all put into it, but thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
One of the things I got from our, our audit was the concern about getting to, we're getting real close to our fund balance, and that's one of the things that I think as a board, we really have to take into consideration, that the fund balance, we are really, really close to that threshold where one major catastrophe could really push us over to that particular, that particular point. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything?
No, sir. Just to thank you, Purvis Gray, for doing this report for us, and, and again, I asked Mr. White to address the issue of fund balance. As we all know, I think I would like to have our bucket a little full, more full, as Mark has reminded us tonight, and we'll do everything we can in our process here in our budget for this year to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We'd like to close our presentation by acknowledging and thanking your staff. We come in with a team of six, maybe seven people, and we spend, you know, probably 700, 800 man-hours here, and we take up a lot of their time. We get nothing but total cooperation all the way up and down the line. We spend the most of our time with the finance and accounting group, Teresa Ellis and Alice Passata, but really all the way through the organization, so we do want to acknowledge their efforts.
Thank you. Let's give our financial staff and then Purvis and the other guy a big applause.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Needham, please return to the podium to provide an overview and introduction regarding the Marion County Kids' TAG Art Program. Now we're ready to roll.
I don't need to do the overview, Mr. James. I jumped the gun and gave it to you too soon, but again, I do want to thank Mr. Albright and his staff, and all they do for, for our schools and our students. And I'd like for them to come up and, and present the check, and also, I think Deborah has a few words for us, so.
Good evening. We're really excited about this program. Last year was our infant stage, and this being our second year, with a 17.5% increase over last year, we're just ecstatic. Last year was our infant stage, and this being our second year, with a 17.5% increase over last year, we're just ecstatic. With over 100 specialty plates out there for such worthy causes that the legislature has approved. This just, just shows those children that, you know, the, the arts are so important. 30 schools were involved this year, 16 of the art teachers in the elementary schools. And, you know, those that, that use that art, that's what we look for in the workforce, actually, after they graduate school. Because those are the people that think outside the box. Those are the ones that, you give them a blank piece of paper and they can figure things out or come up with new ideas and innovative. But we had some great partners this year. Mr. Albright, I believe, was going to speak of that.
While I do that, why don't we start a food fight up here? Mr. Chairman, do you remember, last year, there was a big fight about who got what plates? You're the chairs, so you have to divvy them out. I've got them covered up in case you want to play them like poker.
Guys, I'm just, whatever you get, that's what you got.
Strict discipline, you say. I do want to, I'm going to speak on behalf of Corey Poole, Jenkins Auto Group, who this year and last year made the $10,000 donation that really makes this thing happen. Corey is in, sick in bed with the flu, and his sister is as well, couldn't be here. But a little something about Corey Poole, myself, Deborah Dobson, and Corey, all proud graduates of this school system. And Corey came to me when I was the state legislator at age 16 through a program I started with the political science high schools of getting some interns. He came in, got the bug, ran against Lamar Luffman for the school board at age 18. Didn't win, but got himself started. And he's done very well for himself. And I know you all know, a year ago, he made a 10-year commitment of $100,000 a year for 10 years out of his personal resources to the College of Central Florida Foundation. So very great success story. And what we want is to have a couple hundred of those every year come out of our school system. So we're very proud of Corey, and we thank Jenkins Automotive for that. I want to thank as well Ms. Needham and all of you all for your support. Mr. Superintendent came over and picked a tag after much. Yeah, oh yeah, oh yeah. Yeah, if you were, if you were superintendent, you'd get to pick a tag. I mean, you know, you're a tax collector, I got to pick a tag, sure. But we're, the kids, it's, the first year, we had the vast majority of the schools participate. This year, we had 100%. I have to thank the Fine Arts for Ocala and Sarah DeSantzen Group, that they gave $1,000 this year and last year. And also Woods Printing now has taken it over. Last year was the company that started it in Polk County. This year, we're dealing with Billy Woods, who's made us a number of donations of materials to make this happen. As a result, numbers are up. We got parents participating more, and we're up, what, a couple thousand dollars more? So anyway, this thing's here to stay, and we're going to continue to support the arts. And, you know, one last thing, Mr. Chairman, I hadn't been here in a while. But I walked in and I just got to say hi, and I know the majority of the people in the room. It's nice still living in a community where you see people that you know. Yes, sir.
Yeah, just one last minute thing. We are having the ceremony to honor these students. There were two students chosen from each school. In addition to, and what Mr. Albright alluded to, we have choice awards. So Jenkins Auto Group was able to choose one of the tags for their choice award. Superintendent was able to choose his for his choice award. The tax collector, we also had Fine Arts for Ocala, they chose theirs. And Appleton Museum, they're actually sponsoring our program on January the 25th. It'll start at 11 o'clock, and it's open to the public. So anyone can come and see us honor these fine students and their teachers. Appleton Museum. Oh, and they're on exhibit for 30 days. Appleton is doing that for us as well. So they've already got the tags and they're, they're down there, so.
I'd like to say thank you, Mr. George. We, I was having a conversation with a gentleman in the community, just recently, that you would know. And he was talking about a wonderful artist that's nationally renowned. And the man carries his report card around. And he shows his third grade report card, and the teacher writes to the parents. Little Johnny could really hang in there with his math a little better. He's really not staying in his seat like he should. Think we need to buckle down on the math. But thank goodness we had art in the schools, because math wasn't his thing, art was his thing. And today, he's a very, very famous artist, that people travel from all over and have him in to speak in speaking engagements. And so thank you, because I'm a strong, strong supporter of art, music in our schools. And I think of stories like that, where had it not been for that art program in that school, this boy was not college-bound. But today, he's a famous artist. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank, thank you.
Can we, can all of us hold them up at one time and hopefully?
Yeah, but did you get what you wanted? That's all that really matters.
There's no bartering.
And there's no orange and blue or garnet and gold, I think.
And, and if you have more than one car and would like another one, they are available. If you go on the, your website, the tax collector, the tax collector's website, they're available there, so.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to go to College Park and work with the, with the art teacher there. And it was amazing just to watch these kids work and the excitement they got out of this. And again, it's programs that involve in the community and other people that's crossing lines to make these things work. And again, on behalf of the board and everybody that's sitting home and looking at these wonderful tags, thanks for a job well done. Thank you. You're not going to take the check, are you?
Yeah, we're.
Mrs. Superintendent.
I do need to say, Mr. Chairman, as the auditors talk about it, collections are up another 1% this year over last year. They were up the year before that. So I think for whatever budget planning that you're doing, that it's on course.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt the ad valorem millage resolution 13-10, directing the Marion, the Marion County Board of County Commissioners to place said resolution on the November 4th, 2014 ballot? May I have a motion and a second? It was, it was motion by Mr., Ms. Ely, second by Mr. Crawford. Board members, you have been provided a copy of the resolution, which contains a summary of the statute of requirements, the resolution in itself, and the specific ballot language. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Nobody's going to say anything?
I, I certainly hope that the public, when it's time to vote, realizes how badly we need to take care of our own kids here in Marion County. We can't wait for the state to hand us a big check, because it's not happening. We've lost $70 million in the past seven years, and it's not going to go away. For the, for the average, for, not average, for the homeowner has a home that's valued at $100,000 with the $25,000 depreciate, break, it's going to be about $75 a year. And for people out there who are listening, who don't have kids in school and say, I don't want to pay any more taxes, I don't have any kids in school, who paid your, who paid your way when you were in school? You need to realize, somebody took care of you, and you all need to take care of our kids. Thank you.
I will, I will say this, and behalf of that, just hold your applause until, until. Any other additional comment?
Well, I, I want to say, if you were listening, you heard the auditor's report and our fund balance and everything, and seeing the need, there is a great need for us to make sure that we have the music and arts programs. We also have to make sure that we meet class size. And that's, that's one of the critical things that we're, we're facing. If not, we get fined, and that fine is pretty hefty. I, I agree with you on how, you know, when, when we were, we were young, the community made sure that we had all the essential tools that we needed to make sure that the community was going to survive. And education is something that is so critical in the, in the world. And as we move forward, I would just hope that we all would just consider, be considerate of the fact that education today, without it, would be, would be no future for America. Because in our county, needs to set the, the bar to say, we will always be there to make sure education continues for children. Because it was provided to us.
Is there no further comments? I'll close it.
I'm going to vote to put this on, on the ballot, because when this process first started, I said I, I wouldn't. I firmly believe the public should be allowed to, to choose. And I hope that the board will extend the same courtesy about putting another ballot issue on a revenue source that hopefully is going to be coming up shortly, because the revenue is also needed in, in that area. But I just want to make sure that everybody firmly understands exactly what we're going to be getting in if this, if this does pass. You're going to raise the millage rate in this county by 13%. It will be at the highest point that it has been since 2004. If you look at all the items that are mentioned in the ballot language, there's no guarantee that all of them are going to be fully financed. The thing is very open. You can almost, you know, the old saying, you can drive a truck through it. So people need to be very aware, and they need to truly read it, fully understand that what they're voting on may not be fully funded, and, and don't necessarily, you know, be disappointed, you know, on that. There's a mention of an independent citizens' finance oversight committee. There's no definition of how that committee is going to be packed or, or appointed. There's no mention about the duties that, that they have. That committee cannot override the authority of the board when it comes to budgeting. So I'm not quite sure, you know, what that is going to, to be. And if you are, if you believe that, that we need to increase salaries in this county, this is the way to do it, because there is that openness. Because remember, the thing says, let me read it to you. It says, "For necessary operating expenses including," but it doesn't limit it. So basically, it's going to, it's going to create a source of revenue. I hope that, that the items, if it does pass, that the items that are included in the ballot language are actually the ones that are fully funded, and that we don't see this now becoming the same situation that we have with the lottery money, which is, they took the lottery money, and that was supposed to be supplemental, and basically, it's become supportive. And they took the money that they were spending on education and have put it other places. So if the money that we're currently spending on art, music, PE, some of these other programs I mentioned there, I don't want to see that money go anywhere else but those items. And this needs to be, if it passes, on top of it, not used for anything else. It says, it stays exactly what's, what's there. So board, I think we should put it on the ballot, let the public decide. Let's just also realize that this is what is also potentially coming down the highway.
Mr. Stacy.
Mr. Crawford, I understand your concerns, and I agree with you. The good news is, this is for four years. And if we don't appropriate the money properly, it will go away. So I believe that's a big stick that we will be monitored with, that the taxpayers and our constituents expect us to use the money exactly as we said we would. And if we don't, I would not expect the community to ever support us again. So I believe that big stick of accountability will keep us in line here if this should pass.
Go ahead, Mr. Stacy. Are you thinking that we're going to need it another time? Isn't this a stopgap?
In four years, I don't know what will be happening. But one thing's for sure, if we don't spend the money right, 20 years from now, it'll never happen again. So I believe we have the citizens of this community watching us very carefully. They've been watching us for a while. And I believe that success, making the right choices, will get our community on our side to support us. And if we may not need, ever need another tax increase, the economy may just go crazy. We'll just have money flooding in here, but maybe we won't. But I tell you, if we don't, we better spend this money properly if we get it.
Let me, Jessica, before I call for the vote, Andy, have I heard from all of you?
I was just going to support Mr. Crawford in his, in making sure that we, I know we all discussed, and many of you don't know, we did discuss, we were trying to make sure that this was very specific. And I really support the wording that you had chosen for us. But I do believe that the citizens do need to, to vote on it, so. But I respect your opinion, and I value it very much, and thank you for it.
It's important for, for me to just make sure that all of us understand. We put it on the ballot, but it's important for the board to really take leadership on how, if, if it passed, that we take leadership on what it's spent for, spent for. We can no longer keep passing the buck and keep cutting and cutting and cutting. This is appropriate. And again, the school board is supposed to be, and should be, the director of these funds as they come in. And if somebody is doing something that we did not specifically agree with, then the school board should step in and say, hey, we're going in this direction, and this is what we said we would do, and this is what we will do. It's important that we, we establish the fact that this is a transition period for the Marion County School Board. We can no longer look at four-day week. We can no longer look at substitute in classes, substitute teachers in classes. We have to look at the quality of what we want. I am concerned that we have kids that are coming out of, out of our school system that are not properly prepared for their careers. And this is why we added vocational on there, the vocational, the art, the music. That's wonderful, but I do know we need to really step up to the plate as a board to make sure that our students are prepared when they come out of this. And I think this is, this is the, the role that we are asking the, the citizens of this community to support. And they are asking us, as a board, to make sure we do what we said we would do. I will now, Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything?
No, sir, I don't, thank you.
I would like to call the question on this. All in favor of the resolution being placed on the ballot? Please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passed, 5-0. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the charter school agreement for the middle school with Francis Marion Charter, Inc.? May I have a motion? It was moved by Mr. Crawford and second by Ms. Boynton. Mrs. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, as stated in the motion, this charter school agreement is for a middle school that will be separate from the high school currently operated by Francis Marion Military Academy, Inc. and will be known as Francis Marion Charter School. The school is scheduled to open for the 2014-15 school year.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wish to address, address this charter school agreement?
Mr. Nathan Gilman.
For Gilman.
Thank you. My name is Nathan Gilman. I live at 1310 Southeast 3rd Street, Ocala. Have been there for some 40 years, I believe. You've been talking a lot about money. You've been talking about how you need money, how your record seems to be showing you're short on money. Remember, every time you approve another charter school, you authorize money from the state to go away from the public school system. Some years ago, a friend of mine went from Chicago to... Some years ago, a friend of mine went from Chicago to Sacramento on a bus trip. When he got there, he called me to tell me he had safely arrived. And I said, oh, boy, I bet that was great. Did you enjoy the mountains? He said, what mountains? Well, we all do that. We miss the obvious. We walk right by what we didn't know was there. I simply want to highlight a couple of points in case by some chance they may have been overlooked. Although I use some information and data garnered by the League of Women Voters, I am, in this instance, representing only me, not the league. I have two questions for you. School choice was introduced in Florida by former Governor Jeb Bush in nineteen ninety-eight. His intent was to improve the quality of education of all Florida children. The Florida Constitution firmly places the responsibility for the education of its children on the state with its decree that, quote, "Adequate provision shall be made by law for a uniform, efficient, safe, secure, and high-quality system of free public schools that allow students to obtain a high-quality education," end of quote. Article one, section three further states, quote, "No revenue of the state or any political subdivision or agency thereof shall be taken from the public treasury directly or indirectly in aid of any church, sect, or religious denomination, or in aid of any sectarian institution," end of quote. So the question arises, is public funding of private schools, charter schools constitutional? A firm and its co-counsel, John Mills of the University of Florida Law School, has filed a suit arguing that Florida is not meeting its constitutional mandate. I believe a judge in Washington, I've read about this, I can't remember the facts, a judge in Washington State has declared charter schools constitutional, but had reservations on the funding and referred that question to another court. Twenty-one local leagues, League of Women Voters, representing twenty-seven counties in Florida, led by the Atchira County League, are currently studying middle schools. How much time did I have?
Five minutes.
Good. I'll start again. I think I missed some.
No.
Charter schools. According to the Educational Facilities Survey published by the Department of Education, the optimum size of an elementary school is six hundred to eight hundred. This requires that they have enough people to provide a full-time principal and the necessary things to put on education. I believe the application before you calls for the sharing of its principal with its high school. Okay, I'm about to do that. Previously, I cited a constitutional requirement that you, the state, provide schools that allow students to obtain a high-quality education. The schools, the application before you is from a group that has a track record, the only high school in Marion County to receive a D, failing, a mark of their ability. It's a record. It's on the record. And so my two questions to you are, one, is it legal? Have you done your homework to be satisfied? Number two, are you being fair to the students? Are you providing them with a high-quality education? My suggestion, give them a chance, the Marion, Francis Marion Military Academy, Incorporated, to prove what they can do. Table this motion for a couple of years. Let them prove that they can achieve a quality program at that high school. And then resubmit this question. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else?
That's it.
Okay, board. We have any comment, question?
I'll just say that, at this point, a lot of people didn't know about Francis Marion. And a lot of the students that they've gotten have been struggling students at other schools. And I know of some, I sponsor a student that goes there. They've had students from some of the, some of the struggling students that maybe haven't found their way in some of the other public schools we have. I also know that we've had D high schools. My daughter's Forrest High School was a D once, when she was there. So, and some of the school grades are based on very unusual things that I don't, really don't know yet how they figure it out. Because when I, when Forrest High got a D, I thought we were a good school. But I guess somebody said we weren't. But my daughter did quite well there. So, I am excited about the middle school program because now students can, would, will be able, they will be able to get students into the middle school program that can flow on into the high school. And they won't have to be reaching into the community for the students that just aren't making their way in some of the other schools. And so they will be able to have a feeder school then into their high school. And I think it will make a huge, huge difference in the success of, of this high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, who do we have working specifically with charter schools at this time?
Mr. Rick Langford, our deputy superintendent, went through the entire application process that of course is, is generated by the state. And Mr. Langford went through that whole process with the persons who were applying for this charter.
Okay, so have they met all the requirements that we had?
They have. That was our recommendation too.
Okay. The recommended, no, the recommendation of, of the superintendent and the superintendent is that we approve this charter. Am I correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Are there any, thank you. Are there any other additional questions? I call the question. All in favor of approving the Marion Charter, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passed five zero.
Thank you, sir.
That it will be approved. Okay. I declare a public hearing. Ooh. May I have a motion to approve the purchase of one hundred and twenty acres in Marion Oaks area for the use as a future high school? Mr. Superintendent?
Here you go.
Motion is second.
Some of them.
Second. What, did I miss something?
No, it's all right.
It's right here. I just didn't put it there. I'm sorry.
Okay. It was, it was motion by?
Who, who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay, Borton.
And was second by Ms. Ealy.
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, due diligence analyses are complete and the results are satisfactory. Therefore, staff is recommending the board purchase one hundred and twenty acres from the Summer Limited Liability Corporation as a site for a future high school.
I declare a public, public hearing. Is there anyone present who wish to address the purchase of the Marion Oaks site for a future high school?
Mr. Jimmy Gooding.
Jimmy Gooding, fifteen thirty-one Southeast Thirty-Sixth Avenue. I'm an attorney. I represent Summer LLC. I would prefer, if there's any, if the board has any questions, to try and help answer those. But if not, and if that's not something that's fair to ask, then I'll just go ahead and make some, I think, brief comments. Really, I don't, I don't know that anybody has any concerns about it. I don't want you to talk y'all out of anything.
I have a question. You'd mentioned one hundred and twenty acres.
Yes, ma'am.
There was parcel A was ninety-two acres. Are we taking that also?
Yes, ma'am. That is part of, I have to ask Mr. Hurley to do this, the final.
I thought it was both parcels.
Mr. Gooding, your clock hasn't started.
I was gonna say, I hope my clock ain't running.
Dave Hurley, Marion County Public Schools Planning Governmental Relations Manager. So the question is about the ninety-two acres?
Yes.
There's a configuration, and I would ask that if you look at this or consider the land as a piece of paper, and then the ninety-two acres is a subset of the one hundred and twenty that staff is recommending. And if you were to purchase all one hundred and sixty acres, you'd be taking the entire rectangle. There is a sixty-foot strip down the west side that would provide access to the southern acreage if the board.
And Mr. Hurley, that's what we're looking at, both parcels then?
Yeah, it's really, it's described in the contract as you have the option. You could get ninety-two or one twenty. And so that's why I said that the ninety-two is a subset of the one twenty. So it's not ninety-two plus the one twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any more questions from Mr. Hurley? Mr. Gooding?
I don't wanna talk y'all out of anything, but I, I think it would, I think, a little bit helpful to comment on the process that Mr. Hurley had to go through. This was an interesting process. And by the way, you would expect a lawyer for the seller to try and convince y'all to buy his client's land. And obviously, I don't wanna discourage that. But this was an interesting exercise for me because I remember when, when I was working for a different local government, I'm not gonna say who it is because I don't wanna get cross-eyed with y'all, working on the interlocal agreement, dealing with concurrency, and Mr. Crawford was there. And, and there were some interesting discussions. One of the most interesting that we had was how school siting was going to work. And when I look back at how the process worked here compared to what we were trying to do then, I found that it exactly mirrored what was in Florida statutes and in the interlocal agreement that we did. Section one six three point three one seven seven says that these interlocal agreements had to establish a process for determining the timing of onsite improvements and the identification of parties responsible for improvements. The interlocal agreement that we dealt with, and specifically in five point three, provides for a number of criteria to be considered, location criteria being the, the first one. Then it says that elementary schools are supposed to be in the interior residential developments. But then, and I didn't even remember this, Mr. Crawford, the location of high schools on the periphery of residential neighborhoods with access to major roads. You couldn't have a better location that met that criteria than this property contiguous to Marion Oaks with the proposed one hundred and sixty-fifth street going through it. The interlocal agreement further provided for compatibility with school site, present and, and project uses of adjacent property, safe access, and then planned availability of, of infrastructure, including roads and sewer. Now, the thing that make this process somewhat unusual is that the school board had to go get a special use permit from the county. And that proved to be a laborious process for Mr. Hurley and my client because the, the county wasn't used to dealing with these issues again because we haven't done it in a while. And this process morphed to where we got, I think, a pretty good deal. All of the criteria and the special use permit match up with these various sections in the interlocal agreement. They deal with compatibility, they deal with access, they deal with all of those criteria. The only thing that's unusual about this one is that it doesn't specifically say who's going to build a road that's going to go through there, one hundred and sixty-fifth. Now, that's a, a road that's been on the county's plans for a while. The draft agreement that started out, that they started out with Mr. Hurley, said the school board was going to build it. Well, Mr. Hurley argued with them that y'all aren't supposed to decide that. That's supposed to be done through negotiations under the interlocal agreement. And it then morphed into, well, we'll just get the, the school board to donate the land that they're buying. And as we continue to discuss it with them, it finally says that y'all are gonna reach an agreement on it. But if they have to buy the land from, from you, which kinda leaves the door open that they will, they're not gonna pay you any more than what you're paying my client. So through Mr. Hurley's efforts, it, it did change from, I think, an unfavorable agreement to one that, that I think should be acceptable to the school board. It does contemplate the fact that that agreement's going to be entered into in the future, which is a little unusual. That was necessitated by the fact that y'all don't know exactly when you're going to start building this school. But more important, the county doesn't know when it's gonna start building one hundred and sixty-fifth either. If the county builds that road before, before the school gets built, then the problem goes away. If y'all wanted to go build the, the school before one hundred and sixty-fifth goes in, then it's gonna be the subject of some negotiations with them. But what I'm saying is that issue could not be put to bed at the present time because of the uncertainty about the timing of the school and the road and the exact location of it. Again, I don't wanna bore y'all with stuff, but I found it very interesting to see how this, this process here went per the interlocal agreement that was prepared back in the heyday, you know, when we thought we were having different problems. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. And again, I don't know if anybody has a concern about this, but I just thought that that observation was interesting.
Do we have any questions?
Just, Mr. Gooding, I, I agree with you. I, I, and I had not thought about it until you brought it up about what was, we were trying to accomplish with the interlocal agreement and the fact that the placement of pieces of property for the purpose of different type of school levels, that we had talked about some, some things about that. And we've got some other pieces that we're also taking a look at. But this is the first time out of the, the box on it. And it did, it worked to the letter of the agreement. So I, I, I can't be any happier.
I commend y'all for that. And also, Mr. Hurley kept reminding the county commission that we had an agreement on it. Sometimes they didn't remember it. Frankly, I was representing the owner and I didn't remember it until after I went back and looked at it, that it worked just like it was supposed to. But.
Mr. Hurley is very, very important to us. So he does an excellent job.
Thank you again, Mr. Hurley. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I, can I?
I'd like to offer, and I'm, if you remember, I was the one that did the, the vision thing when we first started talking about this piece of property, how it could be used for a high school and what we could put there and everything else. But I'd like to offer one amendment to the document that is in, in, in front of it, that the, I guess the board is actually gonna be voting on. And where it says, "Future high school," I'd like to just strike the word "high" and just say "future school site." Because remember, one of the purposes of us buying this is to provide for future boards to have the opportunity that, that we had, very fortunately, when we needed to build two locations in, in Marion Oaks and the property was already owned. But it wasn't designated that it had to be used for a particular type of school. And, and you know me, I'm, I'm a stickler on these things. I, I just, I worry sometimes when we get too precise on things. Obviously, tonight we decided to, to move in that direction on a ballot, a measure. But in this case, I think that we may cause a problem to a future board that none of us may be sitting on if we, if we say "high, high school" instead of just "future school sites." I'd like to offer striking the word "high."
Okay.
It is at the very bottom of the, of the page where it's the first page on the.
Which is in motion, stop, to come.
Right here. No, no.
It was right here.
It's just in the motion and I just, I'm worried somebody will, somewhere down the highway will pick that up on us.
I agree with you.
Okay.
We don't know.
We supported, made the motion. And so we could change it, we can, we can move to, if she would draw her motion, we could go ahead and get, get Mr. Crawford's.
Or you just get a second to get and vote on it and then just go with it?
Trevor's easiest, gentlemen. You're the chair. I'm sitting on the end.
Okay, Mr. Crawford, let, let's, the easy, let's go the easy route on it. Let's, we have, Ms. Borton have a motion, had second motion. And.
And I, and, and I will accept a friendly amendment striking that since I made the motion. That's fine.
Okay. So what we're doing here is that, now, I feel that we need to have that in there, what we just discussed. So we need to put our friendly motion to put, to strike the high school out of there and put futures.
Just the word "high."
The "high."
Yeah, just "high."
Just "high." And just, and I need a second was from Ms. Ealy?
I'll say.
Yes. So we have a motion to strike "high" out and just, in the motion it will say "future school sites." Is that correct?
Right. But you're not gonna amend the motion.
That's, yeah, that's what it should be. We're amending the motion now.
Okay.
RC and.
Okay.
Vote on the motion to amend.
We wanna vote on the motion to amend. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Vote on motion as amended.
Now we will vote on the motion as amended. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Nate? Motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items twenty, C twenty, C twenty-nine, which has been pulled for discussion? May I have a motion?
Somebody second.
Okay, the motion was approved by Mrs. Borton and second by Mrs. Ealy.
Just opposite.
E, Ealy and Borton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As have it for zero. Okay, now we move it seventeen.
Seventeen.
May?
Mr. Chairman, what, what we just did?
We just approved the consent agenda.
Oh, consent, thank you. Okay. I was worried that somehow Ms., the items Ms. Stacy had pulled had also then, you know, slid through there.
No, no.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, may I have a motion to, to table, to remove from the table? Okay, may I have a motion to table, to remove from the table, a motion to approve amendment number two to the original agreement for employment health benefits consultant service with E.W. Silver Associates Inc. and D.B.A. Silver Insurance Consultant of St. Petersburg, Florida? May I have a motion and a second? Okay, do I have a motion and second to remove it, to remove it from the table? Okay.
You want us to make a motion?
You have to remove it from the table if you want to vote on it, you have to remove it from the table.
I need a motion and a second. I'll pass the gavel in order to put a motion on the board.
Okay, I need a motion and a second to put the motion on the table.
So move.
You don't have a second? Motion fails for lack of a...
Wait a minute.
You need to help us. I'm not sure what we're doing here.
Okay, at one time, we were talking about insurance consultants, and we tabled it, and in order for us to...
Okay, remove, okay, I'll second it.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Okay.
And you get a vote.
Okay, all in favor of putting it back, all in favor of, the original motion is approved. Where am I on this thing?
You're trying to remove that motion from the table.
Mr. You're voting on this?
Now we're going to vote on it, yeah.
Okay. We got the motion to remove it now. Carry it.
Now you got to vote for it.
Now, to vote now, to remove this from the table, need to vote on that.
Okay, I have a motion to remove it from the table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay.
Three ayes?
We got three ayes. Okay, James, Stacy, and Ely. Okay.
Nays.
Nay.
May I have the nays? All opposed, okay, you got two nays.
Okay.
Okay.
Now. Now it just carries.
Okay, the original motion before the board is to approve the amendment number two to the original agreement for employment, employees' health benefit consultant service with E.W. Silver and Associates, Inc., D.B.A. Silver Insurance Consultant of St. Petersburg, Florida. The motion to open, is the motion is open for discussion. Okay, the motion is now open for discussion.
Okay.
Ms. Stacy.
We removed this, and we did have some great discussion about it, and our insurance department came up and spoke with us about it, and I believe that during times like this, when we are going into such untraveled territory, this is a time that I believe we should continue on with the consultant.
Board members, you know my opposition, but it's a general opposition. When are we going to wean ourselves finally off of hiring consultants to be doing work that we're supposedly have competent staff to do? Ms. Stacy, you know, the Affordable Healthcare Act, to me, is kind of clear. The only persons that don't seem to understand it is the current administration in Washington because they keep changing it to whatever fits the political climate of the day, but the law is there. We know what we're going to end up having to provide. The only thing you have to do is ask the insurance companies that want to bid on our service in this case, what they're going to end up charging it, and I assume that we'll take the cheapest one, but this is not going to be the only consulting contracts is going to start, is going to come in front of us, and I'm going to do everything I can to try to starve these things out of existence so that that money doesn't get used up on all these outside items and goes back into what we always keep talking about in the classroom. And this is a start. We're talking somewhere between $20,000 to $40,000 that we'll probably spend this next year on that, and that may not seem like much. It's about six grand under what it costs us for a new teacher with the benefit package, but by gosh, we're making a start someplace, and I may be in the minority on these ones that are going to be coming up, and, you know, the first two years I was on the board, I got real used to being four to one wrong, but, you know, I'm going to do my best to put that money back into circulation within the school system, back into the operation of our schools as much as possible, and people may think they need this help, I don't. I have a lot of confidence in...
In reference to where I am with this, one of the things that I will say in reference to just a follow, healthcare is probably one of the most difficult things that we have to deal with in terms of the school system, and with all, with all this emphasis on affordable healthcare, it would be, it would be one of the things that I think we would be making a terrible mistake in the sense that if we abandon the people that have the expertise in insurance to guide our department through this, and this is just to pull it and say that, no, we don't want to do this, and they can do it. They've indicated to us that they need some assistance in that particular area. I'm going to tell you again, I'm not as sharp as a lot of you people, but I know if Custer would have had a better scouting product, he may not have been messed up, especially when all the Indians are coming. What I am saying to you, this is a difficult part for us in terms of the school system in reference to insurance, because we don't know all the crooks and turns that are coming out of this thing, and we need to have somebody down there with some expertise in this to helping our department along. Mr. Superintendent, I know, I'd like for your input on this thing, and tell us where we are.
Absolutely. Well, you know, back on November 26th, that our staff did recommend that we continued the relationship with Cyver and Associates, Kathy Gordon being the presenter and the consultant that we've used most frequently. You tabled that, and we didn't have a workshop, I believe, Brenda, December 12th?
December 10th, I think.
December 10th, we had a workshop on this, and I gave you some...
12, it was 12.
I gave you some information in reference to the tasks that our current risk management department does. We had a lengthy discussion on that, and at the end of that conclusion of that meeting, it was still my recommendation that we have Cyver and Associates be our consultant on this. It's a very complicated issue, as Mr. Chairman has already mentioned to you, and I think that our, we would be remiss if we did not use some experts on this, so that is my recommendation. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Because we do have great employees, and they did, I believe, hear our concerns. And Mr. Crawford, thank you for bringing this to us, because as a new board member, I'm not familiar with all the consulting contracts. I'm not really pro-consultant when I believe that sometimes the consultants can take us down the path of snake oil, as I've seen happen many times in education, but in this case, I believe she heard how serious we are about keeping costs down, and I guess I'm just going to have to trust that she will only use, we're only going to be charged for the services we use, am I correct?
That's correct.
By the hour that we go? And I guess I'm just going to have to trust this time because this, I wouldn't want to be in her shoes for her socks, considering what we're going through, and y'all can call it the Affordable Healthcare Act if you want, but I prefer to call it the unaffordable, and I will always call it the unaffordable because it is unaffordable, and so I don't want it to, I don't want any of our employees to end up with, without benefits that they need because they didn't, we didn't have someone to call, and something got on the track going the wrong way, and so I know it's, like you said, between $20,000 and $40,000, but this one year, I think I'm going to have to say, we have to protect the, we have to protect the integrity of our health insurance program for our employees, and I know she's helping us right now about private, you know, self-insuring, and we're going through a lot of things right now that, I mean, I feel like we're all experts in different things, but even the area that we're expert in, sometimes it gets beyond our expertise, which this Unaffordable Healthcare Act has done. So if the people in Washington don't know, I don't expect her to know, so I support going ahead and let's do this one more year, and I want to go on the record asking her to hold it down as low as she can, use the consultant as few times as she can, and help me out to cover my back on this one.
Any more discussion?
I totally support having Cyver, the Cyver contract renewed for this next year, especially with all of the new issues that are coming up with the Affordable Care Act. We have, you know, Lori Lively is great, but she can't do this by herself, and Kathy, it's Kathy's job, it's Cyver's job, to look at all of the different insurance programs out there and see what's the best bet for us. We tell her what we need and what we want, and she looks out for us and is, I've been very pleased with her so far, so I'm definitely for keeping them.
And Mr. James, I have one more thing. And also, Mr. Crawford, I do believe by you bringing this to us, tabling it, and we have discussion about it, that probably this bill will be a little less than it would have been.
Hopefully.
I believe it will be, so thank you.
Miss Martin?
Well, I just, I just went to another meeting, and I thought just by tabling it, and it was on affordable healthcare, so I was thinking maybe we would table it until some more information comes out on whether or not we would need a consultant or not. But that's just, I mean, I really believe that our department has the expertise, has the people to do the work of this consultant, and also do the research on their own to get the information, because sometimes, I mean, the consultants can bring us some great information, but as we went through this process, I know we're missing a little information that would put us in a different mindset, and that information probably will be coming out on the news or somewhere, but I do believe that if we table it till we get more information ourselves, whether we would need to have a consultant. I do believe that, I mean, we did have our workshop, and I looked at the duties of all the staff over in risk management, and I understand that they have a heavy plate, but I also understand we have some of the best, you know, employees over there that could provide us same.
Okay. One of the things I'd like to say, and then we'll call for a vote, it's, these are troubled times with healthcare, and for us not to have people, have somebody out there that's in this field that really can point us in the right direction would not fit favorably with me, because I just believe that you need to have experts when you're going down a path similar to this. If there's no more discussion, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Naye.
Motion, Miss Martin, what do you?
I said aye when I'm in there.
Okay, the motion pass 3-2.
I know, I was just...
Okay, the motion pass 3-2.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
May I have a motion to approve the template agreement for private instructional personnel to access Marion County School Board students in order to provide professional service for the 2013-2014 school year and authorize the signature of the executive director of student services? Ms. Stacy, I may have a motion and a second. I need a motion and a second to get it so we can have a discussion.
Next question.
Okay. Okay, it was motion by Ms. Stacy, second by Mr. Crawford. Ms. Stacy, you withdrew this item for discussion.
I studied this item a lot, spoke with some, some different people in the community about this item. I just have a serious problem with it, the more I read into this agreement that we are about to vote on today, and I'm requesting that possibly, ultimately, that maybe we table it for a little more discussion. My initial response to this item is that this district's well-known pattern of living in the gray area where the statutes are concerned versus following the intent of the statute is going to live on. The intent of this statute, this new statute, is to make things better for student success by making it easier for parents to hire private licensed professional contractors to assist them in their quest for academic success for their child versus depending upon the taxpayers to pay for this same exact service, where the school system also hires out of that same pool of outside private professional contractors, only the taxpayers don't fund it when the parents, when the parents use this service and they pay for it. The statute's intent, Senate Bill 1108, is so stated that this now allows apparent collaboration of private and public personnel on behalf of their child. As usual, it appears to me that we are trying to get around the parents' utilization of this statute by making different rules for the parent's chosen licensed private professional contractor than the rules, the ones our district employees follow when they hire their private licensed professionals out of the same private pool. In other words, we are once again sending a message that the government knows best, not the parents, and we will get around the parents with this statute when it was written so that the parents could actively engage in their child's academic success, but they will not be able to locate a private professional that can meet the school board's outlandish requirements. If you say that is not the case, then read down on the next item of the consent agenda regarding contracting for speech therapist, and see that nowhere do you require, when we contract a private professional contractor, we do not require that that person has $1 million business insurance besides a liability insurance from a Class A insurance company. We have our private providers out of the community use a B-plus agency, so why are the parents, when they hire a licensed professional, required to use an A business, not a B-plus agency? You do not require the school board's licensed professional contractor, such as your speech pathologist, to use the children's bathroom, not the staff bathroom, that we don't tell them they can't use parking spaces, and on and on. I was totally ashamed and embarrassed that this heinous insulting document that works against parents came out of an office somewhere within these walls. I do not feel very civil about this right now, but I never promised to remain civil when my constituents are being insulted by policies such as this, so I'm asking the board to please consider tabling this item for further discussion. Our school district, last time I checked, was ranked 44th in the state as compared to other districts. My point in visiting this topic, that topic, is that we are ranked at that level totally because of decisions previous school boards have made and approving recommendations from different superintendents that obviously have not worked in the favor of district-wide student achievement. It is time to stop being a rubber stamp that allows licensed professional access to students that parents choose to purchase for themselves, more difficult than school access for the same professionals that our district employees hire to provide the same services. Everything the parents pay for us means the taxpayers don't have to fund, so obviously, we don't have a budget problem, we have a spending problem if we're blocking the parents from utilizing this new statute. Districts like ours, who have made the best students, the best decisions for student success and haven't made the best decisions, is why the legislature voted to implement this statute, to give parents more access, and now we are doing everything in this, these rules to make it difficult for the parents to do this. We're making the parents live by one rule that our private providers don't have to live under. What I see is that we are now going to fight very legislation that districts like ours needed. So bottom line is this, whether anyone on the board wants to admit it or not, our school system's ranking, 44th in the state, is a reflection of the choices we have made in the past maybe 40 years, but if we want different results, we've got to start making different choices, and we've got to stop blocking the parents from access to these schools. I just cannot ask the parents to meet different rules than our own district staff meets when they hire their outside providers. If anyone read this document, this contract, you would see that they even talk about the parents can't, I mean, they can't sit in lounge chair, they got all these old rules, that they use the bathroom, the parent's representative. This is a licensed professional contractor. We are requiring insurance that almost probably makes it cost prohibitive for the parent to even hire anyone, and my question is, why are we making a contract for parents to sign that is so much more restrictive than what our own licensed professionals that the district and taxpayers pay for sign? I want someone to help me with this.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to address that, and I'm going to ask for two folks to make their way, Mark Vianello, if he would make his way to the podium, and also, I'm going to ask Mrs. Morris to interject in here also. And Mark will be much more eloquent than I am, but he will share with you that the intent of what we have placed before you tonight is to comply with the statute that does now permit parents who have a previously arranged agreement with a private therapist, whatever they may have, to permit that therapist or someone that is assisting that child to come onto our campuses. Prior to this time, we did not permit those parents to have their own private therapist to come onto the campus, and now we are, and we're simply meeting some of our own requirements as far as liability concerns, and that's why we brought this for you. So I'm a little confused by your comments, Ms. Stacy, but I'll let Mr. Vianello. Did I summarize that appropriate or a little more?
You did, Mr. Tom, and if a parent chooses to bring an outside, their contracted outside provider, could be a behavior specialist, it could be a speech pathologist, a psychologist, we will now allow, statute requires us to allow that service provider onto our campus. They have to be Level Two background screened, but they are allowed to come on, onto our campuses and provide their services and to consult with our service providers to do what's in the best interest of the child. And this, when this statute was passed, we consulted with two attorneys. We consulted with our ESE attorney, Mrs. Amy Pitch, and she presented the template to us and presented that to Mrs. Morris, who reviewed it, I believe made some minor adjustments to it, which is now presented to you tonight to vote on. But the intent is to provide support for the students. If a parent wants to bring in outside additional support in addition to what we provide, that's their choice, and we'll work collaboratively together to, in order to help the child.
I don't agree. I believe the intent of this contract is to make it so difficult for parents to exercise the right to utilize that statute, because we have made the most ridiculous comments in this, that basically, you might as well have put, they have to have blonde hair, be five foot two, and be female. I don't know why you didn't just add that, to make it even harder, because at this point, when you say they can't use parking, certain parkings, they can't use parking spaces, I mean, it said staff parking, then it said parking spaces, they have to use the students' bathroom, they can't use the staff bathroom. If we're truly concerned about the safety of students and having them background checked, you certainly wouldn't want them in the students' bathroom if that's truly your concern. The days of treating parents like they're aliens on our school campuses is going to end, Mr. Vianello. This contract requires the parents' choice of a licensed, licensed professional contractor to work with a Class A insurance company, where the one that you hire, for the same, the same behavior psychologist or whatever, can use a B-plus insurance company. You require that they have a million dollar business insurance. You, you talk about them not being able to sit in certain areas, I mean, the rules are ridiculous.
Stacy, I'm. Did not write this contract. We had.
Yes, ma'am, I'm prepared to help, and I'm going to refer to.
Okay, I thought that you were behind some of this.
Then let me ask a question.
And let's just, with the points Mrs. Stacy has, has brought up, the difference between what we require of people that we hire, that would be maybe providing these same services versus somebody the parent is hiring, then, Mr. Superintendent, why would you, if you say we didn't write it, why would you be endorsing something that is requiring more than what we require for people that, that we hire? And let's just take the point, the difference in insurance requirements, why?
I'm going to ask, we'll let Mrs. Morris attempt to address that for you, sir.
I think the issue about where you think they're being treated differently, I think there's a reason for this. I think that when we hire someone, we have interviewed the person, we've gone through whatever procedure to hire someone who's then an independent contractor. We're responsible for that person. A parent could bring in anybody that had a license. We don't know at this point how many of those someones would come in, and I think that's probably the reason about parking and things, where if there was a large number of them, in some schools, the parking is very slim, and this would be an influx. I frankly, this is a template agreement, and if a concern is with a detail like the B-plus versus A insurance or the amounts, I'm sure that that could be changed so that was similar, but I do think that we owe the students and the other people in our schools the protection against people that we have absolutely no control over coming in.
We do have control. These are licensed professionals, they do have insurance, they have liability, their backgrounds, their background checks are done. Everything that you require for someone you hire, what you're basically saying is the same old, same old, we know what's best for your kids. Parents, you just don't know, and then you wonder why the parents don't come here anymore. And you want, it's funny, when the train goes off the track, who do we blame, the parents? So the legislature, because like you said, we used to not allow parents to do this, so the legislature, to get around Renegade District, said, well, from now on, you're going to have to do it. So what do we do? We form a policy that is so outrageous that no parent could find anyone that could even fit this category. Do we require our professional outside private contractors? Do we require them to have a million dollars just business insurance, not counting the liability coverage? Question? Well, I think we need to table this until we get some better answers in this community. Can I make a motion that we table this?
What do you mean?
I don't know what we require, the amount is.
Hold on, hold on.
What are you calling business insurance?
I don't know, it was in this contract that I read, on my computer, as you know, I had a problem with my computer, and I can't pull it up, but it said something about a million dollars business insurance, but it didn't sound like that was even part of the liability coverage. I don't know what business insurance even was.
Says commercial general liability insurance.
What do we require for our, I would like to match.
I believe it's the same, I'm going to refer to Ms. Morris on that, but I believe it's the same coverage.
Okay, then, let's say, did you find it? Let's, um. Yep, so private special person. Hold on just a minute. Services will not be delivered in the students' classroom unless the school's principal, so you got that, but we've got, I don't really understand why we have different rules. I don't understand why we don't just mimeograph whatever you require from someone that you hire out of the private sector and have the same rules for the one that parents choose, because obviously, if they've got the commercial liability and everything, do you, do you make, okay, for example, question. Our speech therapists and speech pathologists, do you have in their contract they can't use the adult bathrooms? I'd like to see it.
I don't believe that's in there.
I bet it's not either. I just bet it's not. I rest my case.
Mr. Vianello, the question that I have is, if we do allow these people to come in, where are we going to put them? I mean, do we have to provide spaces? But do we have to provide a room?
We do have to provide, the school administration has to find a place for the individual and the student.
Exactly, and we're so short of space right now in many of our schools, I don't know where.
But we're required by statute in order to do that, so that would be a task that the administration would have to.
But I can't imagine that many people, parents, hiring people to come in. We're doing worst-case scenario, and the sky's going to fall.
Please finish your statement, and then I will come back.
Well, I did, if I understood the question, I believe it was, will the school find space? And the answer is, we're required by statute to find space, so if a parent would like to bring this service, their provider in, then the school administration would have to find a location for that.
Because this statute is something we have to follow. It is like we have a choice.
Correct, and again, I'll defer to our two attorneys who have created this contract in order to try to.
Question. Do we not have to provide space for your speech therapist when he comes in?
We provide.
Why is his space more special than the parents?
I'm not suggesting that it is.
If.
We will provide space for, when a student qualifies for the school system services, we will provide space. If a parent would like to bring their service provider in, we will provide space for them as well.
Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. James, I'm really taken aback by the discussion tonight. We were, we thought that we were bringing to a process by which we would satisfy state requirements. We had our attorneys review that. If you would like us to do some more due diligence, I guess, and present some more information, please direct me to do so, or, and tell me what you want more information on, and I'll be happy to do that, or I would encourage you to go ahead and ask the board for their position on this.
Ms. Martin?
Ms. Stacy, I hear your concern, and I want to, I want to remind you that if I wanted to rent a building or space in the school, I would have to come, follow just about the same rules, you know, because, and what is not, it is not saying we don't want you, it is saying we're not, we are really not saying you are an employee of us. That's, this is what the terms are saying. You're an independent contractor, you're not an employee, so it's not saying you can't use, that you have to go and use the children's restroom, it says designated staff only. And at some schools, there are just regular restrooms that you can use, so it's because they're not employees and the liability issues, they're trying to narrow them down, but they do it with all employees, and if you rent a room, a building, you're going to be subject to some of the same rules, you know. You have to go out and get a rider if you are, if you have your business and add that location to it. It is something, it's something almost general.
Okay, so then you're telling me, Mr. Vianello, that every single, every single outside provider that we use, outside contractor that we hire, has evidence of work comp insurance for all employees, providing services under this contract unless they're exempt, provides evidence of professional liability, errors and omissions, coverage for each individual serving in a professional status, provides it for everyone, not just that person.
I'm going to defer to Mrs. Morris, but I believe that.
I mean, are these same limits of liability? And that all carriers have a rating of A, when I looked on the consent agenda on the next item, and it's a B-plus insurance carrier, so it's not the same. You have made special rules for the parents that bring the same services in.
Okay, let's go.
And you wonder why we have charter schools.
Okay, let's go to Ms. Morris and give her a minute to locate whatever information she has.
It does say, let's see, in the following contract, which is our standard one, for independent contractor agreements, and we have two versions of this. We have one that's for an individual, so there are certain types of language and requirements that are appropriate when it's just an individual, and this one is with an individual who will be a speech therapist.
What's their requirements of insurance?
And then the other is for an agency agreement. When we are drafting the agreement to fit the new statute, it, this, at this point, we don't know whether they're going to be individuals or whether it's going to be agencies, and so you'll see sort of a meshing of the two. I see that a B-plus is required for the speech therapist, who's an individual in this case, and you are correct, I believe that we are requiring, let me see if I can find the A. Yes, there is a requirement of an A rating or better.
Okay, I still my question about the limits of liability. What are we, on your speech therapist right there, how much, what is, in that contract, what is the limit to liability?
One million, two million.
And is it five thousand, not to exceed five thousand deductible per claim?
Oh, we won't let them, I see.
I'm just asking that we.
I'm just flipping through and trying to get you to answer.
I'm just asking that we have a contract for the parent.
No deductions will be permitted without permission, that's in the independent contractor, none at all.
I'm just asking that we ask the parents' private contractor, which is also licensed, have, live by the same rules that the ones that we hire, that the taxpayers pay.
Well, I think, Ms. Stacy, keep in mind that just because you're licensed, doesn't.
With a Class B insurance company.
But you're trying to make the point that one of these professionals that will come in, that because they're licensed, that that somehow makes them exactly equal to the people that we're hiring, and I'm suggesting that it does not. The parents' ability to select a professional, I would question if it was as educated and as aware of all the issues that are involved as the HR department or the ESE department in the school system.
You know, parents have raised children for many, many years without anyone telling them how to do it, and I just, you know, if I'm the only person on the board that believes parents know what's best for their kids, then that's fine.
Okay, let's try, let's try and bring some kind of consensus, not a consensus, but a point that we can, we can vote on this. Are there any other comments? Called a question? Okay. It been called a question. All in favor of passing the amendment? I'm sorry, of passing the motion? The template, the template agreement? Please signify by saying aye. Looking at what we're saying now, we're following.
I think it needs some work.
If it's statute, I don't know that it can be changed.
No, this isn't the statute.
Okay, well, let's move it back and get a motion on the thing. Table it or something.
Mr. Chairman.
We're getting around the statute with this, Ms. Ely.
Mr. Crawford?
Because I have some, I have some questions based on what Mrs. Stacy has said, so I would like to, we can, I think we could do one or two things. We could table this until the next meeting and give her the opportunity to bring back the discrepancies that she feels are not.
And I can get with Mr. Vianello?
Yeah, or we could, and I was looking through, trying to figure out when this would go into effect, I can't see it on the.
I think it's immediately.
Okay, then I would, I would, if the board prefers, I would offer a motion that we, we pass it, but that we suspend the implementation of it for thirty days, which would provide the same opportunity to bring back, because my understanding is, in the discussions with Ms. Morris, is when we pass a contract, and this may or may not be considered in that area, that it's, it's a done deal at that, at that point, you can't, you can't have buyer's remorse afterwards. So if we postpone it for thirty days, then there's no problem with buyer's remorse. At the next meeting, Ms. Stacy could move to rescind what we did, but I think probably the easier thing would be just go ahead, let's just table it for, until the next meeting, and give Ms. Stacy the opportunity to bring the items that are concerned to her, and if they're legitimate, then we can make changes at that point, and if they're not, then we just pass it.
Okay.
Okay.
So my motion is to table until the next meeting. Madam Secretary, what's the date on it? Was it, ma'am?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion to table, this to the twenty-eighth, the template agreement to the, the motion was by Mr. Crawford, seconded by. Okay, by Ms. Martin.
Well, Mr. Crawford made the motion, Mrs. Stacy.
Seconded at the table.
Well, Mrs. Point, she's, that's fine, Mrs. Point.
Okay.
Everybody at the same time. Mrs. Point is fine.
Mr. James? I wonder if this would be better dealt with at your work session, because if she brings the issues to the meeting, then the whole board's got to agree. It seems to me that if she would get her issues to me, for example, we can go ahead and work through them and have something at your work. and work through them and br, and have something at your work session to talk about, to see if you want all the ones that, that she wants or not.
Okay. I have a motion, uh, I understand what, uh, Ms. Morris is saying.
The workshop's fine, what do you think?
I have a motion on the board.
Yeah, and, and, Ms. Chairman, let me, uh, make a query of the, uh, of the chair. When would be the opportunity that it could go to a work session? I don't know what our schedule is like, it'll have in front of me.
If you're gonna bring it back on the twen, well, we have a work session next week, do we not?
No.
Be under administrative briefing?
I can do, I can bring it in.
Under administrative briefing.
And then, and then we could still bring it back on the twenty eighth for a vote.
Yes, if you do it under administrative briefing next week.
Is that working, Mrs. Stacy?
Yes.
And if you'll bring your changes to the workshop or to Brenda ahead of time, so everybody can look at them, um-
I have to get with- Mr. Vianello.
Okay. Mr. Crawford, you have a motion on the board, so you're withdrawing your motion.
No, 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 we still have to table.
We have tabled it.
Yes, sir. So my motion stays.
Vote on table.
Okay, it's being tabled.
You gotta vote.
Okay, all in favor, is the motion being tabled? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
May I ask for some clarification there also? I understand that Mrs. Stacy is going, I, I heard these things, I want you to make sure we provide the information that you want. You were going to get with Mrs. Morris?
I'll get with Mr. Vianello.
And you were gonna get with Mr. Vianello. Are there specific issues that other board members might have, or is Mrs. Stacy the individual that is carrying all of your concern? Cause I don't know what those are.
Carrying mine, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Just want her questions answered.
And I share my concern with Mr. Vianello.
Okay. Oh, then Mrs. Stacy will, will make those two contacts. Thank you, ma'am. Thanks, sir.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the purchase of iRead Diagnostic and Instruction for Selected Targeted Title I Schools? May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Crawford, seconded by Mrs. Ely. Ms. Stacy, you withdrew this item.
Yes, I did. I'm always curious, um, and I assume someone from curriculum's here to help me, how we choose programs that we use. When I visited the website for this company, um, I didn't really see any credible research to support this company, and so I would like from someone from the district to come up, Ms. Dewis, and help me, if you would. I just have a question that, um, what I'm, I, I, I noticed that this particular, um, program is Common Core aligned, and you can help me probably by letting me know, when we are testing our students come-
April.
FCAT time, or whatever we call it now, will we be testing them on the Common, are the Common Core standards already written into the tests that they will be taking? That's my question.
This year, we are going to assess all of our students, um, on FCAT Next Gen 2.0 standards. So no, ma'am, we will not test them on Common Core this year.
Okay, here's, okay. That, okay. This particular license, when I went to the website and looked it up, it's Common Core aligned, and so it is teaching math and, and, um, is aligned with the math type Common Core issues and stuff. Well, here's my concern.
Okay.
That we are gonna be remediating students with a curriculum that is Common Core aligned, but we're gonna be testing on the FCAT, old FCAT standards.
Right.
Are we not going to confuse our students? Because the teachers come to me and say, we're teaching one thing, but we're testing something else. Do we really want to, for the next few months, have a program in the schools, and Mrs. Ely, you might can help me more with this than, since you're an educator, that is Common Core aligned, when right now, today, in fact, some of us tuned in to the hearing that's going on at the state, we don't even know what the standards are gonna be, and we're buying programs and stuff for standards that we don't even know what they're gonna be. So do we really want to have teachers remediating students using a math program that's gonna confuse them on their FCAT math scores and set the students up to fail and set the teachers up to not appear effective because we're, we're, we're not using remediation that the kids are gonna be tested on? That's my concern.
Let me, let me give a little bit of overview, overview about what this is all about right here. This is an after-school tutorial program. We actually have thirteen schools, and Dr. Dewis, you jump in here and tell me if I'm inaccurate on this. Thirteen schools this past year that would've, would've been D's or F schools had they not been given that special dispensation by the state. Our lowest thirteen elementary schools, if you will. Two of those schools, Evergreen and Sunrise Elementary School, as you know, have the extra hour-long program, and we have already given them some extra things to do for their children. The, uh, the other eleven schools of that bottom group, we're, we're, we wanna call this, if you will, an, an FCAT blitz, a strategy to get our students ready. Uh, the, the word that you see that, of Common Core, let's not confuse Common Core standards with assessment. The Common Core standards are one thing, and assessment is another thing.
But I know they're doing math and stuff while they're-
And so what we're attempting to do is to use this after-school program, uh, which is a diagnostic program that also then prescribes what are, what are good activities for students to do for students in these schools. We've targeted about a hundred and fifty students at each of the eleven hundred schools. Um, you asked who selected this? We used three of our experts on this, Tara Hart, a reading expert, Stephanie Elizondo, our math expert, and then someone I rely a great deal upon, Linda Maxwell, our, I call her our elementary expert, uh, to actually make the recommendation to do this purchase. And then this activity will be at these eleven schools. Dr. Dewis and the Title I budget actually will make the purchase for this, and it's, and then it, it is a fantastic program. It is to help prepare students for the assessment, whatever the assessment might be, and it's not gonna confuse anybody, I can assure you that.
Okay, that was my question.
It's not gonna confuse anyone.
I don't want us to put something in the schools that is going to be, um, teaching the Common Core style of math, but yet there'd be, the teachers are gonna be graded on how their students do, and they're gonna be tested on the old FCAT type of math, I mean, the old type of standards math.
And math is energetic, that, um, when our standards move from FCAT to FCAT 2.0 Next Gen, um, and then they aligned our standards to Common Core, many of the standards that we already create, not we, cause it's not me, but in Florida created, they're already aligned that way.
Okay.
And so with the iReady, um, those workbooks that you're going to hopefully purchase, help us purchase, they will basically, well, just so you know, a little bit of background about the program. This program will run from two until four thirty. So at two o'clock, when the bell rings, our teachers are still on contract because they have to plan for their regular school day. And so what we have, um, hired are pairs, this actually started yesterday, so the pairs will have those kids from two o'clock until three o'clock, while the teachers are still on contract. So at that time, they get a snack, um, paid for out of food services, and they also get homework help, and they're actually working on the computer with this iReady program.
Okay, I mean, I'm for it, I'm just, if, if it's not gonna get, get them confused because the teachers-
I don't think it will get them confused, because when they're working with the teachers from three until four thirty, cause it's an hour and a half for that piece, um, it's gonna already be aligned, and so what will happen is they will work on, and I know that book says Common Core, but basically everything out there says Common Core. This book will correlate to FCAT, Next Gen 2.0.
Okay, that was my concern.
But they added the Common Core piece to make it more rigorous, so go a little bit deeper.
Except the University of South Florida says it's not more rigorous, so.
Well, I apologize for that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Are there any more, uh, discussion?
I just wanted to know, I didn't want the teachers to call me and say, you voted on something that's Common Core aligned, but we're not being tested on Common Core. I mean, our students, and I'm gonna be, and then I'm gonna be evaluated based upon how they do, and I want the teachers to be not suffer because of our bad choices here.
Thank you.
Okay. No more discussion, call the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the following donations? Two thousand five hundred dollars to Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School from their business partner, Ajax Construction Incorporated via the Public Education Foundation. Fifteen thousand dollars to Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary School from Dr. N.H. Jones PTO. One thousand five hundred dollars to Forest High School from the O'Kella Jeep Club of Florida. Seven, seventy-five hundred dollars to Forest High School from the Knights Home Run Club. I'd like to know how that happened, Knights versus Forest. Three hundred, uh, three thousand dollars to Fort McCoy School from the First Baptist Church of Fort McCoy. Two thousand five hundred dollars to Fort McCoy School from their business partner, uh, eight, what is that? Eight, uh, Adenas Springs South via, via the Public Education Foundation. Eighteen, uh, one thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and ten cents to Greenway Elementary School from Green, uh, Greenway Elementary PTO. Three thousand dollars to Harvard View Elementary School from Village, the Village View Community Church of, uh, Church of God. Twenty-five hundred dollars to Howard, uh, Middle School from their business partner, Cox Communication via the Public, uh, Public Education Foundation. Four thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty cents to Madison Street Academy from Madison Street Academy PTA. Seven thousand three hundred and ninety dollars to Madison Street Academy from the Madison Street, uh, Academy PTA. Four ambulance with a total value of eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to, uh, to Marion Technical Institute from the Marion County Board of County Commission. Two thousand five hundred dollars to North Marion Middle School from their business partner, Seminole Store, Stores via the Public Education Foundation. One thousand dollars to Reddick Colia Elementary School from the Public Education Foundation. Two thousand five hundred dollars to Shitty, uh, Shitty Hill Elementary School from their business partner, Signature Brand LLC vi, via the Public Education Foundation. One thousand dollars to Spar Elementary School, School from O'Kella County Association of Realtors Inc. Two thousand five hundred dollars to Vanguard High from their business partner, OF Cannon M.D., O'Kella Orthopedic Group, P.A. via the Public Education Foundation. As you can see, we had a lot of donations this time. Ms. Ely, would you do us the honor?
Certainly, I totaled it up.
Oh, may I have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
May I have a motion to accept it?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I would like to make a correction, Mr. James, you, you did pick up on that. The fourth item that was listed, that was seventy-five hundred dollars to Forest High School from the Knights Home Run Club. That is a typographical error, my apologies for that. It should be seven thousand five hundred dollars to the Vanguard High School from the Knights Home Run. But thank you for that.
I thought, I thought, I thought Forest was getting the-
Yeah, I was wondering.
They did along well, but I think we need to make that-
I don't think they, they wanna share funds like that.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Ms. Ely?
I totaled it up, and including the, um, four ambulance is the value of them, it's close to seventy thousand dollars, and I am so proud of our business community for stepping up and helping the school of their choice. Um, some have been donating to more than one school, but this is what makes our community successful, when we see that the businesses are involved in the schools. So thank you, thank you, thank you so much for recognizing the needs of the school that you're giving money to, and we appreciate, keep that money coming, folks, thank you.
Yes. Okay, board direction, now, we're at, uh, the meeting reminders, the next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, January twenty-third, two thousand fourteen, at nine AM. The purpose of the work session is to receive an investment summary update and an annual charter school report, as well as discuss the sale of, of tax ballot option and Phase Street Legacy Wall Drawing, along with the naming of the same. The school system will be closed on Monday, January twenty, in honor of, of Dr. Martin Luther King Day. The district office will be operating on the four to ten-hour day for the balance of the next week. Board concerns? Okay. We'll start with you, Ms. Ely.
Oh, okay. I had the privilege and honor, along with, um, Ms. Boynton, to go see, um, an incredible music teacher, Nico Wickline, at Hammett Bowen Elementary, and she did, and I, I just wanted to stay all day. She did such a great job with the kids, there was not one discipline problem. Children were so focused on the music, and, um, she just did a great job, and I hope, I, I appreciate Sandra Collins talking about music in our schools. We need to bring it back, and I know we're going to, once we get some extra money from our property owners. Also, um, parents and anybody who has children involved, grandparents, please, and teachers especially, um, address your, to your students what Dr. Martin Luther King is all about besides just a holiday. It's a very important day, and, um, your children need to know it's, it's big, it's part of our history. I plan to go to the March, I don't know that I'll be walking because I had knee surgery, but I, I plan to go there. So it, it is an important day, and we need to recognize what we're off for. It's not just staying at home playing video games. Thank you.
Ms. Boynton?
I just wanna follow up with, with Ms. Ely, we, we really did have a, a great time over at Hammett Bowen, and just to see our music teachers and just, just the routine of the day, uh, it was really interesting, and also to get to play the instruments ourselves. It was very interesting, and it, it just show, it shows us where needs are and how, how in tune the students are really, you know, into the classroom. I also wanna talk about Martin Luther King Day, um, it is gonna be a wonderful event. I hope to see many of you there. I want, I did write a song, I'm not gonna sing it, but I wrote a song.
Are you singing it Monday?
Not, not at all. Not at all.
When are we gonna hear it, Ms. Boynton?
Outside in the parking lot. And it, it, it's really just, um, and I, I mentioned that because it, when I wrote the song, it, it, it was, I was just not even thinking, and all of a sudden, when I played it for, for my mom, she was like, this is about Martin Luther King, and I thought, okay. You know, it's once I had a dream, once I had, I heard a man had a dream, and I, and it's just interesting where we are now, you know? For me, from my childhood with Martin Luther King, understanding, um, the dream he had, what he inspired in all of us, and where we are today, as we can look and see how far we've progressed, you know? It's just, uh, so I just hope to see many of you at Martin Luther King. I'm not singing either.
Mr. Crawford? Ms. Stacy?
Well, I guess I have to be the third wheel here. I too was at Hammett Boeing, Bowen twice in the last three weeks with a music teacher there. I, I went just before Christmas, and then I went last week already to visit her class because I promised a little boy I would come back to the party, and I came back to the party so that I could see him, and he was so happy to see me. So, um, that I also did. But in with my concerns, I spoke with a fellow board member Thursday about all of the mandates that we hear, we, you know, we get and everything, we have to spend certain dollars over certain things, and so I was just curious, I mean, I don't support Common Core. The, uh, in fact, this very past weekend, at the state, um, Republican Party meeting, both of the, there's two groups that are recognized here. There's the State Committee Men and Women Group, and then there's this other group that's the chairman of the sixty-seven counties. So there's sixty-seven chairman, and then there's sixty-seven counties of State Committee Men and State Committee Women, and there's two from each county. Both groups voted on a resolution against Common Core. It did not come to the full, the, um, the Republican Party itself, I guess they, they're not wanting to come up with, do the issue, so they didn't allow it to come to vote for the full group, but everybody was, that was there got to vote, and the two, the two groups that were there, both groups voted, they're opposed to Common Core in the state of Florida. So therefore, it's becoming quite political. And so what concerns me is that when I ask why we have to, the teachers are concerned about all the training, and we're flooding them with all this costly training, we can't meet class size because we've got to pay for all this training, um, but then when, when employees come before me and I ask them in, in curriculum, why are we doing this? Well, we have to, I mean, Race to the Top says we have to train this Common Core, and we have to, the state says we have to train for Common Core, you know, we gotta get this training in. So, and I also shared that at the MTI meeting last year, when the state, when the, um, State School Board Association spoke to us, it said that none of the districts are gonna go Common Core until everybody's ready for it. So I, my point last Thursday, when we were at our workshop, is so why are we in a race to be the first ones to do it? Spending all the money. So I sent an, I contacted our finance department, and I said, please share with me in writing, and I want this statement in writing. She said, well, I can give you the numbers over the phone because they're so nice and they know I'm not real good about pulling things up on the computer. So- So, I said, no, give me this one in writing. I said, I want to know, to the penny, how much we have been given for digital, digital stuff out of our technical budget? How much we have been given, um, for training? How much we've been given for anything that involves Common Core? From Race to the Top, general budget, any place we could've gotten money? Here's their response. Mrs. Stacy, in response to your question regarding expenditures for Common Core, Teresa and I collaborated, and to our knowledge, there is no funding that is specifically designated for this purpose. Therefore, we cannot provide any written documentation as requested, indicating a certain dollar must be spent for Common Core. So, given the fact that we're so short on money right now, I was a little bit kinda surprised when I went to the DOE, um, website this week, and noticed that there were six counties that had done power, that had been to a presentation of some sort up in, at the Department of Education. I don't know if we went there, Mr. Tomlin, to give this PowerPoint, or if we did it, we sent it to them. Did we go there?
I'm not sure what you're talking about, Ms. Stacy.
Um, there were six, there were six PowerPoints from six counties, talking about all the wonderful things Marion County's done towards Common Core, like we're the Common Core experts here, and they had a fourteen-page, um, overview on it and everything, and we're just doing all this stuff. But I thought we were so busy trying to get our test scores up in Marion County, that we have time to go off to Tallahassee and teach everybody how to do Common Core, oh, and meeting best practices. There are no best practices, because there are no standards yet. So, that kinda surprised me, that, that we're spending money doing that. But my other concern was at the newspaper, Mr. Callahan. I enjoyed an article that you wrote the other day. Someone called me and said, you need to look at this. Um, because you were quoting someone that what we did with the perk was not illegal, and that, you know, because we didn't bargain it, and it was illegal. I'm holding a notice to employees that had to be posted in, in all of the places that there were, I guess, where there was staff and where there were unions. It says, posted pursuant to the Order of Public Employees Relations Commission. Notice to the employees. After a hearing, in which all parties had the opportunity to present evidence, the Public Employees Relations Committee has determined, Commission has determined, that we have violated the law. And we have been ordered to post this notice that we intend to abide by the following. So, yes, we did violate the law. Here's notice. Okay? That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. I'll respond to some of this in, in a few minutes. Let me get down here. Ms. Morris? Brenda? Joy, do you have it?
The, the one thing I would like, like to note is, is Mrs. Stacy did make a number of things, and, and I'm not gonna try to pick apart those arguments by any means, but we need to be very careful that we don't confuse things like Common Core, state standards, assessments, digital textbooks. We can't use those kinds of things interchangeably. Um, the one comment I would like to make, Mr. James, we've already made a comment about, uh, Martin Luther King Day. There's no school for students on Mondays next week. I would like to confirm also, for parents, we also do not have school this Thursday and Friday. And so, if your children come home to you and say, Mom, I don't have school Thursday or Friday, it is accurate. So, the students have a nice long weekend. Our teachers do have a workday and, and in-service days this Thursday and Friday. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, some things that, uh, I just wanna share with you all, some things that I have. I had the opportunity to be in Gainesville today, to listen to the Florida High School Association, and to, by and large, vote on the various referendums and things, uh, things that we have. I would like to ask the superintendent for us to look at, um, some things, and have a, talk with our athletic directors, and make sure that we do not have athletics events on Sundays. I know that the Kingdom of the Sun, uh, had a basketball tournament on Sundays. And look at the scheduling dates of what we're doing, whether, um, how many games are we playing on Monday? Because I, I like to think that kids need to prepare for their, their academic, uh, over the weekend, prepare for their, their Monday school. I would like to look at what we're doing in terms of athletics and things like that, and how we schedule them, and why we schedule them, and, and, and things of that nature.
I can't, I can't share with you, FHSA does not permit games on Sunday unless permitted by special request. And due to the calendar of events this year, the Kingdom being a four-day tournament, they did ask for special permission to, and the FHSA did grant that only for the afternoon, and not the morning or the evening of that day.
Well, one of the big concerns I have is when we usually do things, it usually becomes a precedent. We-
Yes, I understand.
And, and that's one of the big concerns I have.
I'll be happy to get that.
Okay, also, let me, let me make something clear, and I would like for the board to understand where I am. I called back and asked, was there anything pulled about one, two, uh, one, I think it was around eleven, or what time? Board, we have always had a standing rule, where if you're gonna pull something, give the staff enough time to prepare. Now, no, no, it's my turn, it's my-
My cell phone was totally lost this morning.
Okay, I don't, my big thing is, whoa, it's my turn. Okay, now, I do not like it when I have board, when I have employees up here, and they have not been ha, given adequate time to prepare. I do not like that. And when I say that to you, when, when I read things down here and I ask the superintendent, do I have anything pulled? So, I can at, at least give the board and, and people a chance to be better prepared for this. Now, that's not being fair to the employees. That's not being fair to your colleagues and the people on this side. And I don't like that. I wanna be fair. Now, in reference to comments about what is occurring in Tallahassee and all of that, I have no problem with what's occurring in Cal- Tallahassee. But this is a neutral board. And we don't get into whether it's a Republican or Democratic thing. We are here, basically, to do what is best for youngsters. And if we can keep it in that sense, then, then I think we will have a more civil board. And this is what this is about to me, is to make sure that I do not have, uh, employees coming up here and, and not giving them a chance to, to really prepare for something.
First of all, Mr., um- Since you're, no, you're addressing me, and I'm gonna comment.
No, 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 no.
You have got to stop being a henchman.
Nope, 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 you had, you had, you had, you had your turn. It's my turn.
No, you always do this. You have a problem where you play henchmen.
When you get this gavel, when you get this gavel, then you can do it.
Every single time. So, I'm not gonna be that gavel. But you know something?
This is what I want, and this is what I will get.
I am tired of you playing henchmen at the end of every board meeting. I have warned you privately about that, and it will stop, and it's falling on deaf ears.
Well, let's, let's get this squared away. This is it.
I didn't sign the civility, your civility paper that you signed said that you're not gonna attack the other, that you're not gonna attack the other board members.
Okay, we're ready. I'm through with that, Ms. Stacy, I'm through with that.
I didn't sign it.
Yeah, I'm attacking people that are not doing what we consistently do.
First of all.
Okay, I, I'm moving on, I'm moving on.
Mr. James, I can pull an item off the consent agenda when I walk in this door.
Well, that's fine.
You are not my boss, sir.
I, I understand that.
I think you're misunderstanding your position.
My position is to-
You do what you want, and I will do what I believe the constituents want me to do.
We have, and I'm gonna repeat this again.
I have talked to about this.
We have consistently, as a board, had an agreement that we would try and get this, uh, the things that we will pull so that the staff would have an opportunity to bring us information. Bottom line.
They had plenty of time. From two o'clock this afternoon, it's plenty of time.
We received this agenda last Thursday, so we had plenty of time.
Thank you. And this is what I, and, and reference to this-
Except, next time, just to make that point, I'll pull it at three o'clock when I have something, Mr. James. You're not gonna tell me what to do.
All I want for you to understand is when you do that, you're not being fair to everybody that's around.
You don't need to tell me what I need to understand. You don't need to tell me what I understand. I know what I understand.
Okay, before I address the expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge the board members have had, received an alternative placement list for students through the December thirteenth, two thousand thirteen. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? Seeing none. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J.D. fourteen dash twenty-nine E. J.D. fourteen dash thirty. J.D. fourteen dash thirty-one. J.D. fourteen dash thirty-two. J.D. fourteen dash thirty-three E. J.D. fourteen dash thirty-four. J.D. dash fourteen dash thirty-five E. J.D. fourteen dash thirty-six E. J.D. fourteen dash thirty-seven. J.D. fourteen dash thirty-eight. J.D. fourteen dash thirty-nine. And J.D. fourteen dash twenty-five. With educational services through the first semester of the two thousand fourteen through the two thousand fifteen school year. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
It was motion by Mrs. Ely, second by Mrs. Boynton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed five zero. Being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? To move.
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Crawford and second by Mrs. Ely. All in favor signify by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed five zero.